Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Moises Riordan. I am the project manager for the proposed resurfacing and related work on Route 138 project, which will be presented tonight. I work in the roadway project management section at the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's Highway Division Headquarters in Boston. Once the hearing is completed this evening, the attendance sheet will become a part of the public record. So, if you would like your attendance at this hearing to be part of the public record, please sign in on the sign-in sheet located next to the door. Handouts containing details regarding this project are next to the sign-in sheet. Now, I would like to introduce the members of the hearing panel. Pamela Hasner from the Districts Five Office, Derek Roma from our Right-of-Way Bureau, Topher Smith from HMTV Mass DOT's Design Consultant for this project, Alex Tu and Brandon Mullin are also from HMTV Mass DOT's Design Consultant for this project. Our transcriptionist Anne Carrington of Arlington Typing and Mailing, Arlington, Massachusetts, will be making a verbatim transcript of tonight's hearing for the public record as required by law. The notice of hearing appeared in Tonton Daily Gazette and the Brackton Enterprise on August 13, 2019, and August 20, 2019. A copy of the notice is in the handout and will be attached in the final hearing transcript. Page three of the handout explains the purpose of the hearing, which gives us an opportunity to make a formal presentation of the proposed project and at the same time allows us to record your input regarding this project. The estimated total project will cost $7.4 million, which will come from federal aid funding with federal highway administration funding 80% of the total construction cost. Mass DOT funds the remaining 20%. This project must be programmed in the statewide transportation improvement program in the appropriate federal fiscal year in order for Mass DOT to solicit bids for eventual construction. The total estimated cost of the project does not include any right-of-way acquisition costs. The design is expected to be completed in the winter of 2020. Construction is expected to be completed within 18 months of the notice to proceed. First, I would like to ask Derek Roma to explain the right-of-way procedure.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Derek Roma and I represent the Right-of-Way Bureau at Mass DOT. The Right-of-Way Bureau is responsible for acquiring all necessary rights in private and public land for the design, construction, and implementation of this project. Effective property owners will be contacted by personnel from the Right-of-Way Bureau and/or consultants representing Mass DOT. The procedures used must comply with state and federal regulations governing the acquisition process. The current design plan indicates that a yet-to-be-determined number of fee takings and permanent easements may be required, and other areas may also require temporary construction easements. Effective property owner's rights are protected under Massachusetts general laws, primarily Chapter 79, and if a project is receiving federal funds, the property owner's rights are further defined under Title III of the Real Property Acts of 1970 as amended. I'll be happy to answer any general questions regarding the right-of-way process during the open forum, and I'll be available after the public hearing for any specific questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Now, Topher Smith will describe Mass DOT's project in detail for you. Please keep in mind that the project we are presenting to you tonight is still in the design stage. Once Topher completes his presentation, I will explain the hearing procedure and then open up the hearing to your questions and comments, which we will take into consideration when completing the project's design. Please hold your questions until after the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out tonight to learn more about the project. As we said, Route 138, resurfacing project. Project limits, excuse me, project proponent, as you know, Mass DOT is the proponent. My name's Topher Smith. I'm from the, from HNTB. I'm here with my colleagues who are with the design firm that's helping out and design for this. Mass DOT's Highway Division is responsible for administering the design process. We're responsible for delivering the design. DOT will also be providing resident engineer services once the project goes into construction. Project limits: just north of King Phillips Road to just south of the 495 interchange. You'll also notice, as highlighted in orange on here, you'll notice that the Center Street intersection is not included in there. That's a construction project that's going on this fall, potentially into next spring. We will be doing some work within that area of Center Street, including adding sidewalks that that project may not have, to complete the connectivity in here. Project goals: why are we here? What's the purpose of this project? So it's to resurface the roadway, reconstruct the pavement. Also, there's a high-crash location at Carver Street intersection. It's actually in the top 5% of crash locations for intersections across the state, so real opportunity to improve safety there. Additionally, providing ADA compliant sidewalks, crosswalks, and accommodations throughout the site, as well as providing bicycle accommodations. A little bit of history on what we've done so far on the project. There was a roadway safety audit that was done. That's something that the DOT does for these high-crash locations. We go out, we take a look at the location, drum up different ideas on how we can improve safety at that Carver Road intersection. That happened December 29th of 2017. And we had a design kickoff meeting. We pulled in some individuals from the town and from the, from Surpa, Southeast Regional Planning and Economic Development District, local LPL, to talk about the project and make sure that we were headed in the right direction right off the beginning. We submitted our 25% design drawings on June 10th, 2019, and here we are today at the public hearing to solicit all your feedbacks. Existing issues on the roadway, if you're familiar, you write it, you derive it every day. Deficient pavement. It's a rough ride out there. One of the interesting things about the, about this project is the roadway has an existing reinforced concrete slab underneath the road, which is, which is not typical. We don't typically run into that on roadway projects. It provides a pretty considerable constraint. Also, as the, as that, that concrete has deteriorated over time, it's resulted in some of that cracking that you drive over and then bounces as you drive down the roadway. There's also quite a few overhead utilities that fall down along the roadway. Corner safety, I mentioned, Carver Street intersection. We'll talk a little bit more about that, as well as the Center Street intersection. Again, that's a separate project. We're inside in the middle of this project. Mentioned the pedestrian and bike accommodations that we'll be providing, as well as improvements to roadway drainage, including there's a culvert just south of Carver Street that'll need to be extended as part of the project. So through project development, we looked at a couple of different ways that we could approach this. So we wanted to provide better accommodations for bikes and pedestrians, improve safety, and provide better pavement riding service, while also dealing with this existing concrete slab that's beneath the roadway. It's quite the, quite the project constraint. Removing that concrete slab is very expensive. It takes a long time for construction if we, if we were to mess with that. So we looked at a couple of different alternatives. The first one we looked at: six-foot bike lanes, 11-foot travel lanes, including a sidewalk on either side of the road, narrowing things in a little bit, coming in towards the middle of the roadway more. In doing that, there's considerable impacts to that existing concrete slab, as well as this roadway. It carries about 25,000 vehicles per day, that's 45 miles an hour, which is a pretty high-speed runway. So it brings those bikes and pets a little bit closer to vehicles. So for those reasons, we moved on from this alternative. We looked at a different idea. We said, what if we move, we do a shared-use path on one side, and we can, we can accommodate those, those bikes and those pedestrians offline, provide a, provide a accommodative shoulders on the roadway. As you can see from this alternative, actually, let me point out it because it might be a little tough to see from there. This is our layout line, typical state highway layout line, right here, the right-of-way. You can see this path would, would cause considerable right-of-way impacts. We'd be impacting a lot of people to do this alternative. And additionally, we don't necessarily get away from potentially having to deal with this, this reinforced concrete slab in the roadway, increasing costs, increasing impacts. So we moved on from that alternative to the preferred alternative that we're proposing for you tonight, which is maintaining the roadway width as it is today, leaving that concrete slab generally in place, providing 11-foot travel lanes, but with a three-foot buffer between the bikes and the, and the vehicles. Again, it's 45 mile an hour roadway. And providing a five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk, roughly in the, in the current location where the sidewalks are today. Now, the sidewalks aren't ADA compliant, and they're not, they're not connective, unless this project will provide them. So there's a couple of locations throughout the, throughout the project that we wanted to, we want to highlight and bring to folks' attention. So again, project goes from King Phillips Road up to just south of, just north of King Phillips Road, excuse me, just to south of 495. Towards the southern end of the project, Britton Street, there's one, one location here where there's kind of a tough angle, the existing roadway, existing Britton Street comes into Route 138. We're teeing that up with a little more of a 90-degree intersection style, which will provide better site distance and a better approach, better experience as you're trying to get onto Route 138. Richards Street is another location that we wanted to highlight. It's down here towards the south of the screen here. Currently, Richards Street comes on, it actually goes onto private property as it, as it exists. It also has a similar skew like Britton Street. So we're bringing that back into the layout, and we're, and we're creating a nice 90-degree intersection there for that. Carver Street, this is, this is where a lot of the, a lot of the benefits will be provided from a traffic safety standpoint. We're upgrading the signal system, all-new signal there. We're adding left-hand turn lanes, improving the phasing to accommodate those left-hand turn lanes, as well as providing an exclusive pedestrian phase and crosswalks where there aren't crosswalks today, and they'll all be ADA compliant. About a third of the crashes that happen at this high-crash location are left-hand turns going from Route 138 onto Carver. Unfortunately, there was actually, there's actually a fatality at this intersection a while back involving a motorcyclist heading southbound with the, with a vehicle heading, heading left onto, onto Carver there. So providing, providing this, this phasing, adding that left-hand turn lane, and better accommodations for pedestrians will dramatically improve safety at this location. Additionally, I wanted to point out, this is the McDonald's on the southeast corner. There's also a handful of crashes that happen for people making the turn southbound, heading into that, into that McDonald's. There's some signage that, that tells you that you should turn left at Carver Street, but not everybody does it. So we're proposing raised median in the center of the roadway in that location to be more prohibitive for actually making that movement to improve safety. Crosswalks throughout the project site, I wanted to draw attention to this. There's a crosswalk that goes from Mel's Diner, roughly, if you're familiar, goes from where Mel's Diner is, to the, to the post office. Pavement markings are very faded. From the traffic counting that we did at the Carver Street intersection, we did not get a lot of, there were not a lot of pedestrians in the area. And it, that crosswalk in that location is considered a mid-block crosswalk, right? So as you're driving 45 miles an hour down the roadway, you don't necessarily anticipate to have a crosswalk right there in the middle of the roadway. We anticipate crosswalks when we're pulling up to a major intersection or something like that. So the practice is to, in a location like this, we're proposing to eliminate that crosswalk. We're here to solicit feedback as well about that. And there's going to be a new crosswalk about 700 feet north at the, at the new Center Street intersection that'll be built as a part of that project. Additionally, there'll be new additional crosswalks at Carver Street. Again, these will be at intersections where motorists are expecting to find pedestrians crossing the road. Next steps, we want to hear from you. Want to solicit your comments? There's a 10-day comment period. I absolutely ask questions, but also take advantage of filling out the, the handout that you have and mailing in your written comments. That feedback's really important to us. 10-day comment period closes on September 7th, so please do get them in. We're going to be preparing and submitting the 75% design plans. Again, we're at preliminary design. We're only at 25%. And then we'll move on to environmental permitting at the same time as we go to 75. Environmental permitting: project will file a categorical exclusion checklist. Section 106, Section 106 Historic Clearance for the historic properties that are in the area. Wetlands Protection Act Order of Conditions will be submitted. That's part of that culvert extension that I mentioned earlier, as well as the Army Corps Section 404 permit, which is also part of that culvert extension. So I mentioned the 25% design submittal. Here we are today at the public hearing. 75% is going in this fall. We project 100% design submittal in, in the spring of 2020, and then the project will be advertised in 2021, and we expect construction to start in the fall. And with that, I'd like to thank you for coming out, and we look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you, Topher. Before I open the hearing to questions and comments, I would like to explain the hearing procedure. First, as stated previously, the purpose of this hearing is to solicit your input regarding this project. As the plans are not yet complete, we may not be able to answer all of your questions or respond to all of your comments at this time. Next, we ask that anyone who wishes to have his or her comments entered into the official hearing transcript, please stand up, identify yourself by name and affiliation, whether you are in a buyer, local official, or concerned citizen, and spell your last name. This is necessary in order for us to obtain a full verbatim transcript as required by law. Also, the last sheet of the handout is a mail-in sheet. If you have any questions or comments which you would like to submit in writing, please use this sheet for that purpose. You may leave this sheet with me tonight, or you may mail it to the department within 10 days, as Topher said. It will become part of the official record. Finally, it is normal procedure to ask elected officials to offer their comments first. Are there any federal, state, or local officials who would like to speak at this time?
John Teixera, T-E-I-X-E-I-R-A, remember the planning board and a resident. Ed, I have a question. Given the volume of traffic and the density of the area, have you considered reducing that speed limit from 45 down to something lower?
You know, that, that hasn't been something that we've looked at as a part of the scope on the project. The scope of the project would be to accommodate what's out there today. That's not something we've explored, something we could look into, but we haven't yet.
Something for consideration. I mean, could it be considered? It's a race track. Everyone here will agree with that.
No, this is, well, this is good feedback to get. It is, can I direct it to you?
I just wanted to add to what Topher was saying. Once construction is complete, we can come back and do a speed study, and that's how we have to post speed limits per Mass General Law. Unfortunately, quite often, people do go faster, and it's based on the 85th percentile of vehicular traffic, so even though we often would like to see the speed reduced, even if it's posted lower, people don't necessarily follow the law.
No, I understand that. There are some people that do follow the people.
Right. But it's something we can look at. I mean, at this point, it doesn't, it would have to be after construction, and then, you know, hopefully with the buffered bike lanes and, you know, with the geometry, hopefully people will slow down. That might help people feel like it's more of a constrained cross-section.
That's true. It's a very wide roadway today. It'll feel a lot different when those stripes are put down. And it's a legislative process to drop that speed limit, so it takes time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Buckley, Highway Superintendent for Rainham. Two questions. On the Britton Street intersection, do you, have you looked at a crosswalk at that location? Possibly with a signal, you know, just a crosswalk signal to cross between the two Britton street entrances?
Okay, so we, we have not. We've not done that. A warrant analysis would have to be done based on the volumes of the crossing traffic, volumes of crashes, things like that. So that hasn't been done. I don't have a straight answer as far as whether it would meet the warrants. I would say unlikely. And so then we'd probably, we'd wind up with an uncontrolled location with a, with a crosswalk, which kind of acts like that, that mid-block crossing.
Now, when you say uncontrolled, you could set up a flashing crosswalk.
Rapid red, yeah. Yeah, rapid rectangular flashing beacons and things like that. That is, that is something that can be done at, at mid-block crossings.
I'm not sure it warrants it. I just wanted to know.
Yeah. It's not, it's not being proposed today, no.
Okay, thanks. The other question, to refresh my memory, on the Center Street intersection, is that also contain a left turn lane?
Do you recall, Alex? I'm sorry to interrupt you.
It's wider. I don't remember if it's a left turn specifically.
My apologies. I don't know if, if a left turn bay is being added as a part of that project.
Okay, because I didn't, I'm traveling 138 myself. If I come in that way to go to King Phillips Street, there's no left turn lane. King Phillips, it'd be problematic to, to get it for us.
Yeah. And we may not show it on here because it is a part of another project, and we don't. It's not something that we have in here. We tie it to the limits of that job.
Hi, I'm Bob Iafrate, I-A-F-R-A-T-E on the Building Commission. I've got a couple of quick questions. You showed alternate design number two, where you had the bike path and the pedestrian path on the same side.
Yeah.
Has, have you ever designed a situation where you have a bike path on one side the whole length and the pedestrian on the other side the whole length? Does that help with the center line and the taking of land?
With a bike path on one side, bikes only on one side, pedestrians only on the other side.
Correct.
We've not done that. I personally haven't done that. Once you open it up that way, so are you thinking on a race curve?
Well, I was looking at your designs, and I was, you know, considering the land taking that we involved to have both on both sides, and I thought maybe if you just had one on each side. And the other question I had is, how do you end the bike path when you come to the end of your work limit where there's no bike path? Does it die into the sidewalk, or does it just end?
So you mean for the, the bike lanes that are within the proposed design, or?
Well, the proposed design has bike paths, which end up dumping into a layout that doesn't have a bike path.
Right.
How do, how do those terminate?
Right. So there's a, there's a dashed line, and then it proceeds to an area where we typically put in a shero at that location, and then it's, it becomes, it's the limit of the project, so we can't keep, keep going indefinitely.
And my other question is, Richards Street intersection, kind of a crazy design where it goes onto private property. There is a proponent who's coming in front of the planning board with a proposal for a gas station on that site. Have they reached out to you? Because that would impact their design.
They, they have not, no.
Okay. I'll need to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes, please.
Gordon Luciano, Interim Town Administrator for Rainham, L-U-C-I-A-N-O. Could you give us an update on the status of the signal location, of the signal lights that are proposed for Center Street and 138? I know that was originally a separate project, but is that going to get bridged into this project?
So it's, it's not. It's being built separately. And my understanding currently is the schedule would be this fall or next spring.
So it would be prior to your?
Yeah, that's what the schedule says today, is my understanding.
So if, if that gets developed without a left turn lane at that point, and then you determine that it should have a left turn lane, that would require a different signalization, wouldn't it?
Perhaps, but we're, we're actually not evaluating that. So it has been independently evaluated by another design consultant. They've gone through the same standard of care that we would to determine what the design should be, so we're, we're not revisiting that.
I can add to that.
Can you take the mic to the cable? Can you grab that mic?
Sure. I apologize. I did try to find out the status of the, it's, that the Center Street is being signalized as part of, it was actually Phase Two of the Walmart permit. There is a permit issued. I know it went through all the local permitting and Mass DOT, and they do have a permit, and I believe it was in part delayed because of underground utilities. And I haven't been out there recently, but I don't know if the gas company is, has started to work. I think they, they have, and once that's all resolved, then the construction should start. I don't remember. I think there is a left turn lane, and I will follow up and let you know, but I, I didn't have a chance to, to double-check that, and it's been a little while since I've looked at the plans, but I'm pretty sure that it does have a left turn lane at that intersection. And as Topher mentioned earlier, that will be constructed. The construction should start for that pretty soon, and this project will come in, and we expect there will be some tweaking that will have to be done at that intersection as part of this project, but that intersection should be done before we get, before this project's constructed.
Thank you.
Okay.
So are there any other federal, state, or local officials who would like to speak at this time? No?
I'm also.
Now, this hearing is now open to the public, and we welcome your questions and comments. Please, please.
Lisa Pedro, P-E-D-R-O, I'm from Surpa. We recently completed our Top 100 for 2014 to 16, and the intersection at King Phillips Street is ranked number 81, so I'd like to request that you take a look at the crashes and see if any safety improvements can be done as part of this project.
Could I just ask, Lisa, that was 2014 to 16 you mentioned? So that was after the signal was installed. Okay.
Okay. So I understand that that signal was installed not too, too long ago.
Correct.
Okay. And currently, it's south of the project limits.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is James Dupont. That's capital D, small i, capital P-O-N-T. I reside at 118 Holmes Street. I'm here as a concerned citizen. There were, there were a number of comments made in James' presentation that were interesting and of some concern. One of, first one I'd just like if I may, to the chair, to the gentleman. You talk about the crosswalk not being warranted at Carver Street and Broadway.
Carver Street and Broadway, we are putting a crosswind.
Mr. Iafrate asked a tangent question, which was really on my mind. There are people here who have gone through that intersection on foot innumerable times, in the dark. And the problem in why Mr. Iafrate's comments are relevant is he talked about what do you do with a bike lane that you create as part of a project that then goes off the end of the earth, because the project ends. And I'm not being smart when I say that. I think that's the context of what Bob was saying, and it's a fair question, because you have exactly the same situation right now at Carver Street and Broadway with the On the west side, northbound, the sidewalk ends approximately 45 to 50 feet from what is the Broadway entrance to the Bristol County Savings Bank. Now, at that point also, the breakdown lane ends. And the reason for that is, and people being traffic engineers and such will understand, that at that intersection you have two lanes coming southbound that merge into one lane. I myself have been running up that breakdown lane where it ends, and so does the sidewalk. And I find myself looking at... and I find myself looking at two vehicles coming straight at me. Now, I didn't, you didn't pause on it very long, but, you know, I'll take a look at it again, but it appeared as though you were going to correct that deficiency in the sidewalk, that it would be a continuous one from the northbound side where it currently ends to the corner of Broadway and Carver. And that's fine, but I think the comment that I'd like you to enter into the record in response to something you said about a crosswalk not being warranted, no offense, no offense, you'd have to be completely out of your mind, and there are people who will attest to that, that that probably applies to me, to want to travel on foot to or through that intersection because of the issues that I just raised. And hence, arguably, your counts or whatever estimates you're relying on pedestrian traffic are skewed against it because it warrants, it militates against it being used for that purpose in its current condition. Now, I think what ultimately would happen is, is that you would improve the sidewalk access. That would then increase the pedestrian traffic, and now you don't have a crosswalk, and that's something I think you need to think about. All right? I think you need to revisit that in light of the fact that in its current condition and its current design, the condition is, is almost impassable, because the sidewalk that is there, where it does go past about the veterinary clinic, the vet's, uh?
Right, to the south.
Location, is totally encroached by vegetation, so you can't use the sidewalk. A little further south, the sidewalk all but disappears as a usable means pedestrian use. All but disappears. In the section that is to the south of Center Street, in and around Central Orde, in and around Mel's, in and around the post office, just before, the sidewalk is literally nonexistent. Now, I just happened to run into his wife and his son the other day, but some of you probably remember Harvey Alden. Harvey Alden was a longtime resident of the town who lived right next to Gilmore Hall, who was a retired teacher, and he walked every day from his house, approximately 100 feet from the corner of Carver and Broadway down to Mel's diner. Harvey was a brave, tough guy, all right? But the point is, he's an exception to the rule. So I think that number one, you've got to revisit that in light of the fact that in its current condition, your numbers are going to show very little pedestrian use because it's insane to do it. And as such, that may, if you were to recalculate that on the basis of if there, because you can't even, because the sidewalk ends. It ends about 40 feet, and you're in the travel lane right where it merges into two lanes. And this is something I think you need to address.
Yeah.
Now, the other thing that I heard, the comment on, just for the record, was the issue of the left-turn lane at, or a left-turn signal at Center Street and Broadway. Now, I know that's beyond the scope of this project, but with all due respect, left-hand, right-hand, better know what you're doing. And, and I, and I think it's only fair, on behalf of the town and myself, that we ask this, make a matter of record to you, that those two things can't be, well, you know, not my job, not my project, and then Rainham is right back where we are right now with a very difficult intersection to negotiate, and all of the associated issues that would then go into changing it once you people have completed your project, because that becomes very difficult, very difficult, so, you know, respectful. I think you need to get those two things straightened out before you proceed based on the thing. The only other thing I'll say is that the town of Rainham's been hearing about this and, you know, and being, and I know you people don't get to write the calendar on it. With all due respect, you just work there. I get it, okay? But the fact of the matter is, this is a matter of what I'd call almost urgency, because you have businesses that are being impacted there because of the traffic issues and because of the poor design quality of the road. And I think there's not a matter that they designed it poorly in the first place. I don't think there's anybody here who's going to say that the traffic counts in this town even 10 years ago were even half of what they are today. And as such, if you over, and you people's traffic, we understand, if you overburden the road beyond what it was the goal, purpose for in the first place, that's what happens. So it isn't anybody's fault, it's just the fact of the matter, there's been substantial growth, not just in Rainham, but to the north and to the south. Most of the traffic on 138 travels through Rainham, it just doesn't actually begin or end in Rainham.
Thank you.
All right? So thanks very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I offer some clarification on, on Carver? Because I think maybe there was miscommunication perhaps, and I want to make sure it's clear. I'm, I'll come back to this location. So at Carver, we are proposing crosswalks at Carver, absolutely. The signal here is absolutely warranted, and the crosswalks are coming across through 138 as well as Carver Street today. So that improvement is being made.
So, I respectfully, I believe you said it wasn't warranted in what?
At Britton Street. At Britton Street. That's down to the south over at this location here. Throughout the project, we are providing, for the gentleman that you talked about before that worked from the Gilmore Hall area, we are providing sidewalks throughout the project. And I know, I respect what you're saying, that what's out there today isn't connected. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Ron Astrolia, N-A-S-T-R-O-L-I-A, I'm in Butter. And are you aware that the sidewalks were just done within the past two years on the west side between King Philip and about 456? I'm going to redo those. Do you have?
And 456, educate me on some other landmarks, my apologies.
Probably just south of where Slatshot is.
Okay.
From King Philip. It was, it was just recently done. It's all new curbs on.
Right, right.
Just on the ones, on the west side.
Right.
Just wondering if you were going to, if the plans were to redo that.
There may, there may be a short section of that that gets redone, but the limit of work is, is north of King Phillips, as well as?
This is north of the corner.
Right, right. So there will be a section through there that it may have to be redone because of the, because of the geometry as well as the utility upgrades.
Do you have any idea approximately how much you're going to need on the roadway, the existing roadway right now, the existing curb, like how much you're going to take?
So there's, from the existing curb, typically, it varies throughout the project site, so you'd have to look specifically at each location. But we're putting a five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk there, where sometimes there's not a sidewalk, sometimes there's a four-foot sidewalk, so it can vary from that range, and then whatever we need to do to, just to tie in the grades and make the driveway safe. It does vary from property.
Thank you.
And we do have plans, if you want to take a look at?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Chris Petty, P-E-T-P-I, from Hawaii. Not really in a butter, but a resident, and right off of Richard Street, between Sylvane and Richard. We connect the two streets in the back. Yeah.
Connection that's down there?
We're right behind that building, right there.
Okay.
I see you redoing Richard, and I've written down, I thought you mentioned that the drainage is south of Carver. Is that the area you were talking about? And I'll, and I'll say why.
Yeah, it's just north.
Right now, there's really no, 138 and Richard Street are pretty level, so when the water, the drainage on the, between Richard Street and the plaza next door on the left gets clogged, that all comes down Richard Street and down to our yard and our house. So I built a berm with dirt to make sure it keeps diverting into the woods and out. In the winter, it'll make a nice little ice rink at our neighbors on the right. So my question is, is when you're redoing all of that, are you going to try to make the Richard Street entrance a little bit higher than 138 so that if the drainage keeps going straight down, it keeps on hitting the drain, the sewer drains there? Because there is no drainage on Richard or Sylvane, it's just the water comes down and it has nowhere to go. We've had two or three inches of water in our yard before, because there's just no way for it to go. So I didn't know if building that up a little bit will keep it out on 138 to go into other drains that may not be clogged?
So the intent of the roadway project would be to contain Route 138's drainage within the Route 138 drainage system, and ingrate that, and grade Richard Street so that Broadway Street drainage stays on Broadway Street?
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Susan Prewindowski, P-R-E-W-A-N-D-O-W-S-K-I, I'm in Butter. I'm just curious about the bike path. Does that mean there's going to be a breakdown lane, bike path sidewalk? And I'm just curious, is the bike path required to get federal funding? Do we feel the need of bike path? I was just curious how that even came about, because we don't have a lot of bikes on that road just because of the traffic? And I wasn't sure if that had to meet the, some requirement to get federal funding, like why do we have on the bike path?
Yeah, so it's a, so it's actually a local estate initiative. It's called the Healthy Transportation Initiative, to provide accommodations for alternate modes of traffic. And so we're providing the bike lanes and sidewalks in accordance, in accordance with that as, as our best standard of practice today. And, and that's why they're in there. And there's a three-foot stripe between, there's, in fact, it's on here, the, there's a three-foot buffer between the bikes and the, and the drivers and the vehicles.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
You can talk twice.
Sure.
Getting back to the bike path?
Could you please?
I'm sorry, Bob Iafraidy, Building Commissioner, Rainham. As far as the design on the bike path and the walkway, just so I can kind of understand it, do you ever have a bike path and a walkway that share the same space?
Yes.
So you could actually merge the two and share the same space?
Yeah, so that would be, this is, this alternative would provide a shared-use path. There's quite a few requirements for it, 10 feet at a minimum, two-foot offsets to anything on the side, so.
So all it does is really enlarge the space?
It's very wide.
You couldn't take a six-foot space and have both bikes and pedestrians?
Yeah, you really can't, because six foot is a typical, well, five-and-a-half feet is a minimum for sidewalk, six feet is a reasonable sidewalk. When you have bikes and their handlebars coming through there, there's not quite enough room, so when you go to a shared use, we wind up with a 10-foot minimum.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, if there are no other questions or comments, I would like to remind you that the last sheet of the handout is a mail-in sheet. If you have any further questions or comments which you would like to submit, please use this sheet for that purpose. You may leave this sheet with me tonight, or you may mail it to the department within 10 days of this day, and it will become part of the official record. Before I close this hearing, I would like to say that we will be here as long as you are interested in looking at the plans, and we will try to respond to questions that affect you personally. Thank you very much for attending and providing us with this facility. I declare this hearing closed at 7:15. Thank you.